Good afternoon. This is the Thursday, September 26, 2019, meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission. All members are present and a quorum has been established. If there is anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to the Planning Commission today at the podium, if they would just raise their right hand and solemnly swear to tell the truth to the Athens Planning Commission as you know it. Thank you very much. Disposition of the September 5, 2019 minutes, meeting minutes. Are there any comments on that? If not, is there a motion to accept?
I move.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
So that's unanimous. Moving on to case 19-06, rezoning North Court Street. Let's see. Mr. Allison, do you care to -- David, I'm sorry. Do you care to just reacquaint everybody with what we're discussing with the rezoning of the North Court Street? Or Paul, whoever.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. Paul Loeb, planner for the city. Based on our conversation at the September 5 Planning Commission meeting, based on the feedback I heard, we did create a new map. There is a recommendation that I think from Member Bain and Member Stone to incorporate a portion of East State Street that was also -- is currently zoned B3 to incorporate that in, and so the new map reflects that as opposed to the September 5 map. There's also included in your packet the relevant sections, at least I believe they're the relevant sections of Athens City Code, the zoning code, sections 230404, 230405, and next will probably be 230406, 230407. And then those are the permitted uses in the relevant sections, as well as Table A, the Schedule Vault Controls, and Table B, the off-street parking requirements, just so that you can compare and compare the differences between each section. We do have typically what would be called a stacked zoning code, of course, and so as you go through from B1 to B2D to B3, you're kind of padding to it. So B2D includes things that are permitted in the zones that come before it, but has things that come after it in the B3 zone would therefore be prohibited in the B2D or the B2, et cetera. So there are a little bit of differences there. As we discussed at the last meeting, the biggest difference between those zones really does come down to requirements for off-street parking for commercial uses. In the B2D zone, there's no requirement for parking for commercial purposes. In the B3 zone, there are requirements for parking for commercial uses, and those requirements change depending on the specific use.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb.
Thank you.
Does anyone wish to open up a comment from the Planning Commission? Mr. Stone?
I think we want to make sure we had a brief discussion before the meeting. We wanted to make sure that we're following process correctly.
So, if you'd like me to review that?
Yeah, if you don't mind for recommending zoning changes, basically.
Yeah. So, based on the discussions that have been had with the Planning Commission, this would be the initiation of a zoning amendment that is initiated by the Planning Commission. There's three bodies that can initiate a zoning amendment. One is the Planning Commission, the second is City Council, and the third is a citizen, property owner, business owner within a zone that they would like to see something changed. Depending on who's initiating the zoning change, the paperwork process changes. If the Planning Commission chooses to initiate a zoning change, the first thing they need to do is create a motion, have a motion to initiate the -- just basically initiate the process. And once you've made the motion, then a clock starts. Within 60 days of that motion being initiated by the Planning Commission, something has to be submitted up to City Council. Should you not choose to initiate or make the motion at this point, I believe you can essentially continue to talk about it as long as you want, just as an item on your agenda. But in order to forward something up to Council, you would first need to make that motion, then have discussions about the zoning changes, and then as a secondary process down the road, you would have to make a motion to recommend the change up to City Council. So there would be two motions in total there. There's no requirement for a public hearing at the Planning Commission level. It is at the Planning Commission's discretion. Should you choose to have a planning or public hearing on a zoning change at any time, your clock goes from 60 days to 90 days. At the City Council level, once they've received it, they are required under Athens City Code Title 23 to have a public meeting or a public hearing. If you initiate a public hearing, there has to be 30 days' public notice.
So whether we select to have a public hearing at our level or not, City Council would still be obligated to have a public hearing regardless?
Right. Yes. So you could even have two. Planning Commission could have a public hearing, City Council will also have to have a public hearing. Both require 30 days' public notice.
So to be clear, ultimately, there are two votes. There is a vote, a motion to start the process, which we, you know, I would contend, Mr. Chairman, that we need to do today. And then there would be a second vote, which would be to recommend the change to the City Council. And we could do that as early as today, or we could wait, based on the timeframes that you established there and you were just discussing.
That sounds correct. I suppose, I guess, if you decided you wanted to have a public hearing, I suppose that would also require a motion.
Okay.
To determine that.
To make that decision, sure. Sure. So, you know, I guess, since we brought this, I would propose, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we open the process discussing this change and reviewing this recommended change to the zoning code.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Okay.
Is that a answer, are you for? Undecided?
Okay. So it's a following procedure?
Okay.
So it was unanimous?
Unanimous.
So it's unanimous, then? Thank you.
To start.
All right. So that starts the discussion.
Mr. Mayor, you've been following this a little bit. Can I get your thoughts on what you think that we want to do with this in terms of changing the zoning amendment?
Sure. Well, I went back and looked at the objections in the past. This is not the first time this has come forward to the Planning Commission, nor is the first time, well, depending on how this goes, not the first time that City Council hasn't spoken on this. And each time, by and large, what was being heard was concern over noise and concern about storage parking. Well, we have 24-hour parking in the city, and we've had it for quite some time, and we have parking enforcement daily within whatever sectors they're working in. They're going and making sure that we don't have storage parking taking place in our adjoining neighborhoods. I believe that that has been resolved. The noise, we have a noise ordinance which has been in place for quite some time. I know that at a time, some of the businesses on the north end of Court Street, there was concern about noise coming from those. I think that has been addressed as well because of the noise ordinance, to where if there is a citizen complaint, we can always use the noise ordinance to have noise mitigation using that particular tool. I think that it would, it makes perfect sense for, you know, the B2D to be extended up to the north block of Court Street. Its title alone, it's a downtown business zone. And so I think it affords some opportunities for economic development on the north block. You know, one of the things that I'm really watching closely is our business environment as a city as a whole in terms of revenue. You know, I'm closely tracking, I think as most of us should be, that we're seeing a decrease in student enrollment at Ohio University. With that comes a decrease in employment at Ohio University, which, you know, can have some consequences on the city side in terms of revenue that we're really looking at. And if we can diversify our economic, our economy here in Athens, I think that's important. And this is something certainly that would be helpful in that with retail on the first floor and not having to worry about parking, because that's the main thing with this. And again, we've got parking enforcement with 24-hour parking, where storage parking is certainly being addressed in the city of Athens, that it would be, I think, beneficial in the uptown business district for, to have this alignment of the different zones.
Member Bain?
Yeah, just a small historical fact. I think the reason why there is a B2D now, because when they first came, it was before my time, believe it or not, and they had put a circle around the parking garage, which was newly built, and thought that maybe the parking garage would be underused, and that's why that area, this was within a 500-foot radius that they had. It's perfect. I can even visualize the map. But now I think that position has passed. I think the problem is there aren't businesses often on the first floor, which is a problem because there's no foot traffic situation going on. Anyway, that was just my historical fact I remembered.
Thank you. Members after?
I don't have any comments.
Any comments?
All right. I have a couple further comments, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, I think one of the points of discussion that we had during our last meeting during the communication was, does this levy additional restrictions on current properties that are in the, that are currently zoned B3 that then would shift to P2D? And they're concerned that you'd be taking away an owner's rights or to do something with their property that they otherwise would be able to do if it weren't a B3. I think it's a valid concern. As we look at the general business zone versus B2D, though, what I would contend is that it actually promotes, promotes an expansion of flexibility for the kind of things that would work in a central business district. I draw your attention to the table of vault controls, specifically the building height requirements. Right now, B3 has a 45-foot and 3 1/2-story height limitation. B4, I'm sorry, B2D has a 50-foot height and four-story requirement. And as we, as this body, I think it was before I was a member, was talking about the potential use for a micro hotel or a downtown boutique hotel, I think that that building height ended up creating a challenge, if I'm not mistaken, for that developer who wanted to do that. Likewise, there's a side yard setback requirement in B3. In a B2D, that restriction, that side yard setback is removed, and there's a rear yard setback as well. Now, if you think about that block and you think about buildings that are side by side of one another, like in a downtown area, it doesn't make any sense at all to have a 15-foot, I'm making sure I have that number right, or, I'm sorry, a 10-foot, one side, side yard setback in that particular area. But as our zoning is now, you would have to. So that's where I think that allays some of the concerns of creating additional undue restrictions on property owners that own property in that current B3 area that would transition to B2D.
Member Bain?
Andy, I'd like to ask you a question about what you see as limitations to additional development here. I specifically am wondering about the utilities that are up there, remembering the garbage truck in the middle of the street and the hole.
Yes.
And a few other things. I don't know it should be a hazard to this potential ordinance change, but I think that there are some serious topographic and other problems on development. I was kind of walking over it in my brain before, when I couldn't sleep this morning, and I saw, I saw it, I thought about that, and I thought about the other things. I think there's problems with storm sewer, there's a problem in my neighborhood with storm sewers, though. But I think it's a serious problem there. I know you've solved the problem, thank God, of the main tunnel that goes down Forest Avenue. But is Rose Street, for example, privately or publicly owned?
Rose is public on two ends, and then it's private in the center.
That's another obstacle, isn't it?
It is an obstacle. But, you know, it, yeah, I don't have enough knowledge to know if that, if that portion that is privately owned has an easement across it. I've never seen one, but I don't know.
It doesn't matter. I mean, it's just a sort of a warning.
Sure.
May look like a big tract of land with a pathway through it, but it may not be open. The other thing is, I guess I'm kind of worried about the big institutions that are in this area. Not that it should stop it, but I'm worried about the Ohio Historical Center, and I'm worried about also, not the, no, it's not going to be a problem for the other one, but that, another, maybe quasi-public places. If they build, for example, if the owner of the next door spot would add five, six, seven stories, and we have another cardboard box-looking place uptown, what's going to happen? I mean, that would potentially be a problem. They have parking, the Historical Center, but I'm concerned about it. I've got investment in it, emotional and monetary. That's all.
Sure.
I just think that it's, the other thing is, I can remember some serious problems going down Forest Street with certain developments. I mean, I hope I wasn't summary in my expansion of it. It just seemed, from walking it.
I'm sorry.
The expansion of the southward into the R3.
Which, which street?
East State.
Chief of Public Safety, John Ford.
Did I say, oh, thank you, John.
Fern, okay.
Okay, Fern. I'm totally befuddled. There you go.
Okay. Gotcha.
And I don't know if we really checked. I hate to see the zoning go right down the middle of what is, may or may not be, a street, but I'm concerned about that back area. That's why I asked you to push it down south.
True.
And I'm worried about how they're integrated. You know, the back areas are pretty, pretty mixed up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, let me just share. Ms. Bain, when we talked about this last week, one of the things that we were certainly wanting to avoid was, you know, anywhere where there's a B3. So if you're looking at the map, this one little piece that's carved out is currently zoned B3, R3, sorry, not B3, R3. And everything else that is in this currently is, the area we have defined, is B3. So having that become B2D, so that's the purpose of what, I know I'm looking at the same thing you are. It looks like, well, why is that carved out that way? Well, it's because it's currently R3.
I wasn't worried about that. I was just worried about the Fern Street thing that was on my mind.
For Fern.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think that it may not be as bountiful. I hope it doesn't end up with a whole bunch of Cornflakes boxes like the rest of the area around. I mean, I wish we had some.
Architectural design.
Yes, indeed. I wish we would. I wish we had something that was, would put more, less of an uptown Columbus, more of an Athens feel to this place.
Sure.
It's very mixed. I mean, there's up and down, back and forth in the area. All right, I'm done.
Any other comment? Let me throw this open to people in our live audience. If there's anyone who wishes to speak on this issue, come to the podium. Please state your name and address. And, let's see.
My name's Barbara Stout. I live at 954 East State Street in Athens, and I'm the owner of Athens Underground, which is located at 90 North Court Street. I'm here today because several people called me about it, and I wasn't really sure whether I was for or against this because I didn't quite understand what it was going to do. And I still have some questions about how this zoning change is actually going to enhance business. Now, I've had my business for 16 years on North Court Street, and let me tell you, it is tough hauling to make it go. It is really hard. And if you've been watching the news, you know how many businesses have, retail businesses have closed along Court Street. I question whether putting in large, as Nancy Bain said, box-like buildings, which is what I'm afraid will go in, four- and five-story buildings, which, let's tell the truth, these are going to be hotels or something like that, and crowding the district, how that's going, an overcrowded area, how that's going to enhance anything? Right now, I've often heard in this council talking about, like, couldn't we be like the short north in Columbus? Well, I have friends who had businesses in the short north in Columbus, and Columbus started developing and tearing things down and getting rid of parking and putting up big buildings. And I have at least three different friends whose businesses have gone out in the short north because of that. And ultimately, down the road, in terms of long term, it's not a good thing. I would really love to see Athens do something that really promotes a downtown shopping district that is consumer-friendly, shopper-friendly, that where people can walk, where people can go into shops. I mean, there's very few, I don't mean to be crude, but right now, if you don't sell booze or bongs, you're in trouble on Court Street. It's really hard. And I would like to see something more like the Court Street of my childhood, when it was a shopping district. People went downtown and they went shopping on Court Street. I remember that. I've lived in this town since 1964. And I really have to question how this change, and if any of you can elaborate on it, how you feel that this change that you're proposing is going to actually make business better for anyone other than a bar or a hotel or something like that? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this issue? Mr. Stauffer?
I hope we know the answer to that question.
Normally, we have a three-minute time period here, but today, there's not a lot of people, and no one objects all up.
I'm going to take up way more time on the bed and breakfast than I am on this.
Okay.
This is, this is just about money. This is about money. The bed and breakfast issue is a quality of life issue.
Okay.
That's my real concern.
Okay. Did you have something?
But I will address, but I will address this.
Okay.
I'm not saying that I'm for or against the rezoning at this moment. I'm thinking and considering and wanting a little more information. So my first question, if I'm allowed to ask questions, is what brought this back to the front burner, and who initiated it, and how did this ball start rolling again? I know we all like transparency in this day and age.
Chair. I can address that. I have been approached since becoming mayor of Athens by several property owners on the north block of Court Street, and what we're referring to is State Street up to Carpenter, wanting to see some development, if possible, or changes on the north block. And one way in which to do that is to rezone it from B3 to B2D, largely because of the parking requirement. When we did a parking study, and I think the city planner can certainly inject himself into this conversation, with the parking studies that have been done in the uptown area, with the one block that we always saw a lot of open spaces or often parking spaces that aren't being utilized, is because there was likely, you know, off-street parking for the businesses, for the retail on the first floor, anyway. And a lot of those parking spaces could be repurposed in something else. It doesn't mean that there's going to be a building built there, but it could mean that there could be a green space built there. There could be a number of things that go into some of the parking spaces that really take up the north block properties. And so I'm the one who brought this forward to this body. You know, as the city planner mentioned, there's three ways in which this can come forward. And one is that this body can take it up ourselves and make a motion to make this an issue that we're going to work through. I thought it was, I still feel strongly about having this happen on the north block of Forest Street.
Mr. Chairman? Oh, Mr. Loeb, did you have?
Just a comment. As the mayor said, the big difference between the two really has to do with parking requirements, specifically parking requirements for commercial business uses. On the north end of Court Street, for example, if you already have a business and you want to expand it, you need to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and get a variance to expand your business where you don't have parking. You can, you can have a business right across the street, if you're on State Street, right across the street, you can have the exact same business, and if you want to expand it, you don't need to get a variance because there's no parking, there's no parking requirement for the commercial use.
Point well taken, but in any particular.
Yeah. So that is the big reason why.
Point well taken, but in any particular situation, there's always going to be one zone bumping up against another zone.
Agreed.
Okay. I'm not saying I'm for or against it, but I was recently talking to a member of a prominent local family, good family, who does a lot of good things for this community. And so I know it's people and money-driven. And again, I'm not saying anything bad about anybody. It's a great family, and I want them to get what they want. I also think, in the big scheme of thing, with OU having a three-year steady decline, gaining in numbers of loss of students, that this may or may not be as important to as many people as would have been previously interpreted or expected looking forward. One thing I did mention at the last meeting was the definitions, or the lack of definitions, or the elimination of definitions of permitted and not permitted uses in the zone. And I think I said, well, why can't you change the parking if you decide and leave the definitions alone? What happened there?
Well, we're still continuing discussions on.
Okay, let me be devil's advocate. Let's say my name is Jack Stauffer, and I'm a professional plumber. And let's say there was a plumbing shop on North Court Street from 1906 to 1985. And let's say Jack Stauffer's still alive, and he may want to be in the plumbing business. And let's say he might want to put it at 72 North Court, where it was.
Well, it's retail business. Is that not correct?
The way it was pointed out to me 10 or 12 or whatever number of years ago was, and I don't know if the books changed or not changed, that that's not a permitted use in a B2D.
Well, would the, your existing business, or this hypothetical business, be covered by a grandfather as far as if we make the switch?
Yes.
So, that hypothetical plumbing business should be able to continue as long as it was in existence prior to.
It's not in existence right now. There's a barber shop there.
Well, Mr. Loeb?
I'm not sure exactly what the zoning code says, but if plumbing is first discussed in the B3 zone, then a plumbing business cannot be in a B2, B2D zone.
That's what I just said, I think.
Yeah, to your point. That's correct. Strip clubs, et cetera, like sexually oriented businesses, those are in B3.
We're not that low.
What's that?
We're plumbers, but we're not that low. Anyway, I'm just being devil's advocate. Can you leave the definitions and change the parking, or did you kick that around? I just want to know. Just curious.
Mr. Stone, do you have a couple points to add?
Number one, to the hypothetical business, you know, I believe the business would be permitted. As I look at the B2, or P3 general business zone, now, there is a contractor yard that is permitted in a B3, which would not be in a B2D. But I don't think that the business that would, Mr. Stauffer is referring to, the hypothetical business, would qualify as a contractor yard.
So in other words, if we move forward, definitions go away, but the parking gets added? That's what you're getting at or proposing? Just clarification.
I don't know that I'm falling to your question. I don't know that I'm following your question.
Well, okay, the difference between B2D and B3, permitted uses, the definitions of permitted uses. You're going to change the parking potentially and theoretically, and I'm not saying that's a bad thing. And you're going to do that, but that's going to make these other definitions go away when that happens. That's what you're saying.
I think I understand what you're saying. Basically, the B3 general business zone uses that are listed, when you look at 2304 of 7, some of those currently could be, those buildings currently could be used for those, and then would not be able to be used for those under a B2D, just to shift that way. And your proposal is to basically do a zoning overlay of an existing B3 area and remove a requirement that is...
I'm not proposing anything necessarily. I'm just getting a point of clarification, so I know how I'm thinking. Okay, that's fine, thank you. In regards to the mayor's comment about the storage parking situation being cured, I wouldn't say it's been cured, I would say it's been improved. Just two or three weeks ago, I watched a car sit on Elmwood for three weeks. I could have taken a picture, but I didn't. It sat there so long with a flat tire, three weeks, I watched. I could have took a picture, I didn't. And it sat there for three weeks. And it was still sitting there when I went to the parking enforcement and said, "There's a car sitting there, it's been there for three weeks, there's weeds growing up around it, it's got a flat tire," and so... That's all I got.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak on that particular issue? Please come forward and just state your name and address, please.
Joan Kurnaski, 56 Mount Street. I particularly came to speak about the short-term rentals, but I have a couple of concerns with the changing of the zoning of the north block of Court Street from B3 to a B2D. I was around when this was introduced several years ago, and the parking situation that closed in neighborhoods, and even though my block on Mount Street is not as affected as North Congress, Grosvenor, Franklin, some of those streets, and we now have parking on Stimson, based on the fact that the city changed the parking meter zones, times and time limits, more people are parking out. And I notice that on Mount Street, at the foot of Mount Street, those parking places are pretty much all full, whereas you get to the upper half, where I am, where it's mostly residential, that's not the case. But what happens is, is when the lower end gets full, the people that live on the lower end that don't have sufficient parking then start parking up. So I think still, this parking situation, if you go out to work at 8:00, move your car, or go to school, whatever, you have a class at 9:00, and someone that works in that area is looking for a free parking place, pulls up on Mount, and they work to 6:00 or 7:00, you get home, and what I'm talking about is bumping up the hill a parking place, which will eventually cause congestion at the upper end of Mount Street, which is pretty much liberated from parking problems. I noticed there were three empty parking places on the north block of Court Street as I walked here, and then there was some construction going on. I don't know what that means. I don't think without a really intensive survey of what's going on up there, you can speak to whether those places are being used at various times of the day or not. So my simple observation is only my simple observation. But the second thing I want to speak to, because of the height issue that sort of safety director mentioned, was that one of the fears I've had for many years is downtown Athens is becoming a breakfast community for students. And the course of my years on the Board of Zoning Appeals, we had a proposition come forward to the board from the individuals who owned the gas station on the corner of the, what is that, State Street and Court? And they wanted to build an apartment complex there. And we turned it down. They eventually built it out on, around the corner. But had that block been turned, and part of the rules was the regulations based on the B3 ruling, but had those not been in place, we could have seen, or if they would go in place, and now all of a sudden, we're going to build another student apartment complex there, or another hotel. We're just adding to what I consider a breakfast community in downtown Athens, full of student rentals, and very limited to homeowners. So we would have lost a business in this age of sustainability and et cetera, et cetera. I know gas stations are not the most popular thing, but we all have cars, right? So even as we draw back from that kind of transportation and use bikes, bus, and walk, we still have cars, and we still need gas, and we're still coming through town, and we have visitors come through town. We would have lost that filling station in downtown Athens. And if this goes through, I'm afraid those kind of things are going to happen, and we're going to lose some of the businesses and have them replaced with, I mean, there would have been a convenience store on the first floor of that apartment complex. But a convenience store, I mean, we had plenty of convenience stores, but we don't have downtown, was a gas station. So I think, I guess I would suggest that you really think this out a little more and think of some of the what-if scenarios. For some people, it may seem a really good idea, but for the overall community, it may not be as beneficial. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else wishes to speak on this issue? Please state your name and address.
Rob Delak. I live at 124 Morris Avenue in the city of Athens. So I spoke briefly last time in support of this, and I will again. What I'd like to do is respond to a couple of things that have been said by the folks Things about lack of foot traffic that are not supporting businesses, off-street parking that's taking up space where businesses could be. A gas station in the middle of uptown is a terrible use of that space. If we want to encourage our businesses and give them more foot traffic, this zoning change is exactly the kind of thing that will help with that. So instead of having missing teeth, is a term you could use for where buildings are missing along the street, those missing teeth, when you're walking along as a pedestrian, are not pleasant places to walk. You're walking along a parking lot, a gas station, the North Court is not a nice place to walk as a pedestrian, because it's not as inviting as the rest of uptown. This zoning change could allow infill that would make it much more inviting to pedestrians. The example that the last speaker gave about the gas station could have been converted to an apartment building with ground-floor retail. That retail might have been a convenience store, but I've also heard it would have been something else, another business as well. That would have been a much better use of the space, regardless of the apartments upstairs, but just the change to a use that would make it much more pleasant environment for pedestrians would encourage people to come to the north block of Court Street. And it is certainly the least foot-trafficed of uptown. And things like these zoning changes would allow the infill that would make it a much more pleasant environment, and allow more businesses to come in that would attract more foot-traffic as well. And then the synergies, I think, would help everyone. So that, you know, off-street parking, lack of business density, if you think about the space around the old Cornwell Jewelers building that was recently closed, that's another wasted space, missing teeth right there, and it's mostly parking surrounding that building, that could be filled with something useful. And I think there's a lot more examples of that on this block. The zoning has been one of the reasons it's not been approved. And this zoning, I think, will significantly make it more likely that we could see these kind of improvements. So I, again, wholeheartedly endorse this zoning change. Thanks.
Anyone else on this issue? Well, I think we... You and Mr. Stoker have like one minute each, okay? We need to move along on this thing.
Barbara Stout, again. I just want to say about the parking around Cornwells, my set aside for my business, which is one space, which frankly, I don't know if I could keep in business if I didn't have it, but I know for a fact that that parking is always completely full, and it's full of residents and people who are parking for the restaurant. If you filled all that parking space up that's behind, I'm not talking about in front where the Cornwells was, if you fill that up, all those people are going to have to go out onto the street, and then they're going to push out. And it's going to, you know, it's always full. It's always full. In fact, I have a problem with people parking in my spot, and I'm frequently having to threaten to tow them. So it's not true that that spot, those spaces, aren't used. They're constantly used, and they're necessary.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
I think for a little clarification on this, and this is where I might lean on the city planner a little bit, but the apartment units above the first floor are still required to have parking spaces.
Absolutely.
So the parking spaces that you were just referencing, I believe, I could be wrong on this.
One shop for the pizza.
The requirement for having off-street parking for courtside pizza, but then the rest of those back there are all required by code for any apartment complexes. The other thing, too, and this was said a couple of times again, just for the viewing audience that may have come in late, is that this allows for four stories. I heard a fifth story and a sixth story thrown out there today. That is not permissible within any of our B zones, you know? So just for effication, again, for anyone who's watching and heard more than four stories, again, under any of the B zones, the maximum height is 50 feet and four stories, whereas in a B3 zone, it is three and a half stories or 45 feet.
Forty-five, correct.
Just for clarity, again, so that nobody's confused out there in TV land.
Okay.
Okay. Again, I'm not saying I'm for or against it. I'm trying to cipher it out. But to somebody's point up there about, you know, building the new buildings or letting the buildings be higher, what we're going to do, and I guess this has a good side and a bad side, depending on where you're standing or what you're thinking, the development that's going to happen on the north block of Court Street when this passes is people building up on their building. And it's not going to have a darn thing to do with creating more retail space. And my point of reference or example would be Kevin and Christie's brand-new building right around the corner, that they had to put it around the corner. That space is setting vacant, because there's nobody there to take that space. Now, when people build these buildings up and create these additional apartments, that will draw the circle in closer, and that will free up more housing. We have housing setting vacant in the neighborhoods now, and there will be more houses setting vacant in the neighborhoods, which will drive down the price of property, which will get you to where you're looking for affordable housing, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any other comment from...
Here, one more citizen would like to speak.
Go ahead. Get your name and address up at the podium, please.
Christine Miles, Fort Street in town. As far as parking is concerned, our street is often overparked, illegally parked, and it seems that there really aren't enough people in parking enforcement to, and the police certainly can't take that responsibility on themselves. But what happens is that there is very little signage along our tiny street, and we are the periphery of the uptown area, FORT, F-O-R-T. So my concern is that, as Joan spoke and Mr. Stauffer, is that also, if there is not parking, then there is going to be even more pressure up in our area, and really, a lack of enforcement. The other thing that I'd like to just ask is, I'm not sure how this benefits neighborhoods, how it benefits our common residents in town. It seems that there are maybe five or six families who will be extremely excited by passing this ordinance and changing these, changing these ordinances and areas to coincide with the South Park Court. But as for the regular residents of town, I'm not, I really don't see that it would be a plus. So I would like for there to be real strong consideration for those of us who have been here for a very long time, have cared for the community, and continue to do so. My concerns also spin off into the next topic that we're going to be bringing up with the B&Bs and that. So that's all I have to say, thinking about the residents and how it would or would not benefit the residents of town.
Thank you very much. Mr. Loeb, I just want to ask you a quick question. I'd like to wind this segment up. But there seems to be also maybe even a generational conflict in terms of how a city should be. You know, the needs of the city 30, 40 years ago are not what they are today.
Right.
And it seems as though, just listening to people, we're kind of caught in that transition, in terms of what the city wants to be uptown, how the north end of Court Street looks. As a preview, is the comprehensive plan addressing something along this line?
Well, yes, in short. Parking is always a bigger issue, is a big issue. What we've found, though, in a lot of these, it's not just as clear-cut as saying a land use and zoning, et cetera, but what happens when you do these things? What are the other impacts that occur? Our B3 zoning is, because it is all conditioned with requirements for parking, the B3 zoning is written with an assumption that everybody is driving everywhere to get there, to go to each place, from A to B to C. Look at Kroger, look at Walmart, look at East State Street, look at Simpson Avenue. You're not going to park at Walmart, then walk to Kroger, then walk to, across the street to the mall or something. You're going to drive everywhere. That's what the B3 zone is conditioned for, is an assumption that everybody's driving. We know that students, especially freshmen and sophomores, almost all of them typically do not have cars. Roughly half to 75% of upper class have cars. Let's just assume that it's 75%. Every time I go to a class, one of the first questions I ask students are, "How many of you have cars?", and if they're upper class. Typically, about 75% raise their hand. We've gotten them through two years where they didn't have a car, then they get off campus, and they immediately find out they can have a car, and then they start driving everywhere. We know that the automobile has all kinds of problems that we're trying to address with the emissions that it kicks out, carbon, climate change, et cetera. We're trying to work through that through our... We're trying to work through that through our Sustainability Commission, which is advocating for getting to a place where we are less reliant on the automobile and building a community that's more walkable. So changing this type of zoning back into a B2D, which is encouraging, it's discouraging car use and encouraging other modes of transportation, bike, pedestrian, Athens Public Transit, which is available for free to all university students and faculty and administrators at this point, which runs well into the evening. Then it gives us an opportunity to do something better with land that is currently being used for the storage of parking. And so what can we do with that land now? Can we make it, can we redevelop a portion, or can we better develop a portion of our uptown Athens to make it something that people want to experience? And I know one of the members here pointed out about that barrier and how the experience of the north end of Court Street is less inviting, and it doesn't feel as walkable as the rest of Court Street. I completely agree with that comment. Do we need cars? Sure. Did most of us drive to this meeting? Yeah, I did. Does that mean I should, I need to have my car everywhere at all times? Probably not. I don't drive to go out to eat when I eat uptown, of course. When I'm at work, I just walk to that place. If I'm going out to East State Street, I drive everywhere. And I'd like to think that the north end of Court Street, it really does fit in more as being, it is a downtown, less than the suburban strip. However, the zoning there is encouraging, it's requiring that suburban strip feeling to it. And that, to me, it just does not fit for that area of Court Street. But, yeah. So, long story short, which you didn't ask for a long story, but yes, our comprehensive plan will be addressing some of those issues. And it's complicated, and it's, there may be impacts that will happen from a zoning change. Of course there will be, there always are. If you make, there's things you can do, there's things you can't do. A lot of those issues are things that we can respond to, and we already know this. We know that younger people are less interested in having a driver's license. Those rates are national. We've got 21, 22-year-olds who are just, who don't even get driver's licenses yet. My generation, I'm 45 now, but I know when I was 16, if you didn't have a driver's license by the time you were 18, something's going on. That's just no longer the case with the current generation. And so these type of codes are really, are written for a development pattern that, as planners, we're starting to say, these development patterns are actually part of our big problem, the problems of climate and all these things. We are encouraging people to drive everywhere. We're using real estate to build roads and highways and all these things. And what's a better use of that land? Is that really how we want to be developing? And what are we actually doing to our society, doing to our environment by encouraging this stuff? Sorry to go, sorry for the...
I'll be really brief, because I know we've got a big item in front of us. But again, in terms of, just to kind of address the neighborhood, the benefit, you know, if Mr. Stoffer sat there and said, okay, I want to open up in my building, my business, a plumbing retail store, I'll tell you what, I would use that, because it was, to me, would be one of the closest places. That's not fair to C and E, because that's closer to where I live. But I think you understand what I'm saying, is that I could see people living on the North Hill going, yay, I can now walk down these steps and go down to Stoffer's Plumbing and purchase something. Or with new development that takes place, you know, if I had a dollar for everyone who said, Mayor, it'd be great to have an Italian restaurant somewhere in the uptown area on Court Street, well, a lot of those storefronts, well, there are some that are open. But you know what I'm saying, is that I think it's going to afford opportunity for other forms of retail that could be on that north block, which I think would be a big benefit of people living in the north neighborhoods, and not just north, west side. It caters to the near east, a lot, that would be there. And again, I think, as was mentioned by Mr. Delak, is, you know, the missing teeth is a big part of what we're looking at, and the not, the almost unpleasant nature of that one block because of the parking lots that people have to walk past. And walkability is a big thing. You know, again, talking about addressing our carbon footprint as a society, and here in Athens unto itself, when we're looking at the younger individuals who like to live close in because they like walkability to it, you know, certainly keeps their cars off the road, or keeps them from even bringing a car here. I think we're seeing that more and more as well, where it's like, I can get through college and not even have to have a car here because it's not that difficult. And with mass transit and the improvements in our mass transit system certainly helps because Court Street's a major corridor of our mass transit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so this is obviously something I think we need to talk further on. I did want to ask if you think at this time that we needed to establish a public hearing or that you would like to have another meeting, just a regular meeting, where, again, we're just discussing things as we go along here? Any thoughts on that, Ms. Bain?
I'd like to discuss it at another meeting, have the information go more widely than it is right now.
Sure, I would agree with that.
Okay.
Andy? Yeah, I mean, I don't know, these meetings are public, and then the council will have to have a public meeting as well. So I think we don't need to do a public meeting ourselves in that people can come, but I agree that we should have another session.
Okay, so we'll continue this at a later date then. Moving on to communications.
Could the meetings not be at noon if there's a public hearing? I mean, who can do this other than old people? It's, who can show up?
Well, as a matter of, I understand what you're saying, but there's actually also a lot of young people with families who'd rather spend their time with their families and do something like this, you know, within the course of their business.
Sure.
So, I mean, we can't win or lose either way on that. It's something, if we did have a public hearing, we would certainly discuss that and discuss it with the idea of a time slot for that, but we're not at that point yet. Let's see. So anyway, communications, the City Council Resolution R-08-19, request to consider amending zoning code to include short-term rentals in residential zones. Before we talk, or before we open up for discussions, I do want to let you know that we would probably let Ms. Fall have 10 minutes to address, if she needs that much time. Anybody else coming from the audience would have three minutes to discuss at this time. So it's something that I'm sure we're going to continue to discuss, but I would like to hold things to about three minutes on opinions there. Let's see. So who shall I have open up as far as with the zone? Ms. Fall, would you want to come up, please, to the podium? And just state your name and your position on the City Council.
I'm Chris Fall. I'm Ward Four, representative. I've been working on this with other people in the city, with our law director, and many people out in the community. And this, what we've put forward to the Planning Commission is only one small part of the whole short-term rental package. And it's not Airbnb. Airbnb is like saying Kleenex or Pepsi, you know, instead of tissue and soda. So that's one thing I would like to put out there very much, because there's a bunch of other things besides Airbnb. When we went and did the bed and breakfast ordinance more than two years ago, it was said by council that this whole thing will be re-looked at, revisited, to look at the other issues. And that was the issues in the R zones. So that's what this short-term rental ordinance that I will be bringing forward in council is going to address. Before anything can be done with that ordinance, the zoning code has to be changed so that it's even allowable to have these sort of uses in the R1 and R2 zones. So that's basically why we're seeing it now. It's a very complicated, you know, it's complicated, but it's here to stay. And if we don't do something about it, there's going to be a problem at some time, either a safety issue or other issues. And we have seen that over and over in other communities where the city does not have enough regulation on it, and it's the Wild West. The city can, they do spend time, a lot of time hunting these uses down right now in R1 and R2, but that's kind of like a whack-a-mole at this point, you know, trying to find, spend a lot of time, a lot of personnel time on those sort of enforcement. And we have Code Office that does have other, has a long list of things that they are responsible for. And I think that if we have regulation concerning the short-term rental, that they will have a better tool in order to use and to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of all our There was a chicken and an egg about why this came before the Planning Commission, before I introduced the ordinance, which will be a license that short-term rental people will have to get, before I could introduce it, it needed to be heard here. Not necessarily a decision made, they kind of have to run in tandem, but that's why it has come forward here, before I have covered the short-term rental regulations in council. So that's one reason why it's here. So I don't want to go really deeply into the ordinance, the licensing that will be required for everybody, because that will be brought to committee, and I want City Council to have first stab at all the kind of issues about it. You know, it's an ordinance that is a license, so it won't be coming before the Planning Commission. This is the part that the Planning Commission has responsibility for, is the zoning changes. So if people are interested in such, I do have a table that I can send to people that kind of summarizes the changes that will be made through the licensing process. So I'm more than happy to answer questions.
Continue, want to, Mr. Member Bain?
I have a couple of questions. I wonder if you are going to have these inspected by the code enforcement, this mysterious document you have going through council?
Yes, there will be an inspection process.
Annually?
Yes.
In other words, it would be public, I mean, it would be electrical and...
It's a life and health, life and safety.
The same thing that goes through code enforcement right now, right? For a rental permit?
It won't be as in-depth, because it has a different use. But there will be an initial inspection by the Code Office. The annual inspections will be by the Fire Department in the Health and Safety, which is the same process that hotels. It will be the same requirements that hotels have for their rooms.
I have a question about that, but I'd like to pursue the Fire Department question. Is it, do we have adequate personnel in?
In any of our departments? It's a question.
Yeah, is it to do that? To do that? I mean, I think the code enforcement office has done a marvelous job of going from a burnt-up group of people on High Street to enforcing the code. And we installed the code, and it's not an odious task for any landlord, but we haven't had a situation like that. Why not use the code enforcement office? They're very good at it to do, I mean, that's your decision, since it's not coming to us and we don't have anything to say about it. How much licensing fee are you considering?
$100, $150, depending on what license that you get.
Well, you know, I probably had, you know, could use this, but I guess I'm wondering, how are you going to make sure there are at least six people in your houses?
One thing about, first of all, we did do some analysis as to the number of different types of short-term rentals, because there are, there's different types. There's traditional bed and breakfasts, where, you know, you may be serving food to your, you know, to your guests and those sort of things. There's homestay, which is you as a homeowner would rent out, short-term, less than 30 days, to people. That's, in this regulation, would have a total of two rooms that you could, at two adults per room. And then there's a tourist home, which is the one where it's a whole house, when you really kind of think about some of the ones that you probably have stayed in, with three-room and the occupancy of two room, two per room, again. One thing about this sort of thing is that it is, because it is user, because people rate, you know, and the user rates and stuff, I think that the sort of short-term rental that we will be getting is not going to be the surf couching. Students can't use it. This is not meant for tenants or subleases or anything like, it's homeowner. And that people are going to take pride in what they're doing. They're also going to take responsibility because there are requirements, you know, you're living in the home for a homestay. It has to be your principal residence, that home. And for the tourist home, you have to live 250 feet, within 250 feet of that tourist home. So you bet you would know that there were more people. You know, it's a lot more hands-on, these sort of occupations, and the occupancy is a lot more hands-on, because you're meeting them, you know, you're showing them through, you're billing them, and you have much more face-to-face time. And because of the regulations in the license, you won't get outside people. You won't get a landlord, you know, saying, oh, well, during the summer, I can rent all these houses out as tourist homes, because you also can't have a rental permit along with a license. It's either or, so.
The tax laws that allow someone to use the property for themselves, how often? I mean, since you've been delving into this and you know all the ins and outs.
Oh, you mean like the permanent residency?
Income tax laws.
Yeah, there will be requirements when you go and do your license to prove that you are a resident.
There are, well, I've heard from people who have them, Dear Captain, for example, that you cannot use it except for X number of days, or you can't. I mean, I think that might be added to your code, but more importantly, I guess I would add, I would say that the size of the rooms is extremely small.
That was put on by administration.
What administration?
70 square feet. That's, I believe that's the housing law. Is that for housing?
Is that the minimum?
That's the minimum, yeah. For a, for one veteran and then...
That would only be for one person, though. They'd have to have 120 for...
Even my youngest kid has a bedroom bigger than that.
That's been our housing code for a very, very, very long time. Interestingly, when we talk about parking spaces, you know, parking spaces are a minimum 180 square feet. So we give more space to cars than we give to people in our code, and it's been that way since the 60s.
Thanks. Good, good point. What do you, how incompatible will it be? Will you take housing out of, existing housing out of space, out of stock, and put it to this other use? Is that what you're going to, is that what will happen as a consequence?
I don't know. I mean, what we've looked at in modeling, when we did some of the modeling, is actually that some people who may be further out in the neighborhoods, who have empty houses right now, they may convert to a short-term rental. So that would be removing a rental into a short-term rental. Because of the requirements, there will be very few tourist homes because of the 250-foot requirement to be within that radius.
It doesn't show up in ours, does it?
Well, I think that's, no, this is just the zoning code.
This is just the zoning code.
So I have a question about why is that language not in the zoning code? That when we define homestay, why are we not saying an owner-occupied, single-family in the zoning code?
Oh, I don't know. I guess maybe it's assumed.
Well, I don't think we can assume things with the code. I would, I would feel more comfortable having that spelled out, and I, that's, in terms of a homestay, that's adding that compound word, owner-occupied. In terms of the tourist home, maybe it's adding an additional sentence with that stipulation that the owner live within that proximity. Just for kind of future regulation of this process, I think it would be helpful to have that language.
That will be in the ordinance, in the licensing ordinance that will be coming forward. That is specifically spelled out, so.
And again, for our television audience, this would include R1...
And again, for our television audience, this would include R1s as well, correct? I was kind of curious in terms of the tourist, where the owner does not have to live in the house necessarily. Are you afraid of people group buying homes within a 200, or corporations coming in and buying groups of homes in neighborhoods and basically just turning those into short-term?
No, because of that requirement of the owner, owner, the owner has to be a permanent owner of that, a residence, a residence, a permanent residence, as defined in the ordinance. So no, I don't, I don't think that corporations may come in and buy a bunch of housing and turn it into tourist homes.
Or just a resident here in town. If I wanted to buy a house, if I lived in my house here in town, and I wanted to buy two houses to the left of me and two houses to the right of me, the 250 feet would go. You could basically have 500 feet, right?
No, it's from the, it's from the, your, it's a radius and is...
250 and 250?
No, it's from the residence, their home.
The middle or the center or the edge?
Yeah.
But if the house is in the middle, then you can't, you can still have a couple houses to the side then, right?
Right. Well, it's a radius, yes.
But you want to do that. I don't know.
I would think in terms of, you know, more than corporations, local developers, local rentals. The other question as far as like licensing, how would the city be able to react to renters who sublease their apartments, you know, as short-term? So in other, so in other words, you have...
That would be against the...
Well, I'm sure it would, but how would, you know, how would they be able to respond to that if people are just coming and going like that?
Well, first of all, it would be the same sort of enforcement that you have now because it's illegal now. The, you know, there's always opportunity for somebody to push the envelope, right? And that's why having regulations that are spilled out, spelled out helps law enforcement.
But when you're pushing the envelope, when this was first addressed a few years ago, it was with the idea of the owner living in the house. And now with, for instance, the tourist housing, now that's expanded. So why did that expand in that period of time?
Because we've been having more and more people who are doing it illegally.
Oh.
And when you have issues like that, because economy changes, you know, it's just like this discussion that we've had about what downtown looks like. Now people are really looking at climate change and our carbon footprints and parking and those sort of issues, and it's a change. You know, it's an increase in density. And a lot of people think that that sort of thing is a good way to go forward in, you know, our uptown area, as Paul alluded to. So when you have changes like that, you can ignore them, but you can't ignore them because you have to enforce it. But you can also capture it and make sure that it's well-done, that health, safety, and welfare of everybody concerned is protected. And that, you know, you, right now, you can have a business in your home. And bed and breakfast or short-term rental is much more when it comes to impact and the amount of time that people are there, the amount of coming and going for a short-term rental is much less than a regular rental.
You bring up the idea of people having business at home, but currently, you're not allowed to have traffic going in. And my wife had a, had a company that we, she operated out of our home, but we didn't have clients coming in and out.
But that, you can have clients coming in and out.
Exactly. So what I'm going to ask is, how does that expand just business, entrepreneurship within R1? I mean, like, at that point, if you've got people already coming in and out of these homes, why can't I now establish a business that's not in the idea of rentals, but I can just start a business? And I now, what would be the, wouldn't it be hypocritical to allow that person with the hotel going on, but I can't have a business where I could have clients coming in and out?
According to the, my reading of the zone, you can now. You know, there are, people have accounting, you know, and they have climate, clients coming in. There is no requirement for businesses now in R1 to have a license unless it's a professional license. So, you know, in that way, short-term rentals would be more regulated than a home business is currently.
Right, but somebody could, I mean, the city could expand then as far as home usage, right? Because if we're breaking down the whole intent of R1s, you know, not just in this town, nationally, then it would seem to me that, you know, you're really kind of opening R1 up in particular for pretty much anything you want to do.
Well, I would counter the idea that right now you can do that, and there's no regulation over it. Whether, you know, when we did our modeling, the amount of places that it's really kind of, I think that the tourist home probably people are most concerned about. The idea that there's going to be a huge number of tourist homes opening up is, I don't, I don't expect that. And it's going to be mostly homestays and such, you know, and what's going to happen is that homestays are going to be opened up for those weekends that people are coming in. People can make a lot of money on those. They're doing it already. We need to be able to regulate it so that everybody is protected. And it also, you know, across the nation, this is being addressed. Athens is one of the few places that have no regulations on it.
Well, we're not concerned with the nation.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. That's, you're out of order on that. No, I understand what you're saying nationally, but I think nationally, the trend is how to reverse the activity that you want to endorse. And, you know, also the fact that, well, everybody's doing it, you know, is not really, doesn't hold a lot for me because there's a lot of things that people do that, you know, I don't think you want to legalize necessarily, just because they're doing it. Any other questions?
To your point, Mr. Chairman, regarding enforcement, you know, one of the things we have found with provisions in our code where we require a licensure is that people who get licensed report to people who are not. And I would point out contractor registration is something that our code has, has put, had an effect for several years, and one of the reasons for contractor registration is for...
Tax.
Tax, tax purposes, so that, you know, our tax department can ensure that they're keeping track of folks who are making money in the city and are owing city income tax. Registered contractors see unregistered contractors and call their office and say, "Hey, these guys have worked in the city and they're not registered." So to the point about, you know, taking behavior that is, that currently is unregulated and unlicensed and regulating it and making people register, it might encourage, you know, people to go, "Hey, my next-door neighbor's doing this and they didn't get a license." And so they know at the code office and can do the enforcement.
Well, last thing I'd also like to ask, in terms of property value, how this affects the neighborhood in terms of selling, reselling homes? Some states are going to formalizing disclosure that a house is a short-term housing unit. If I live in a house that, speaking of, Mr. Stone was mentioning, if I live in a house that I know across the street, there are people that are doing the short-term housing, that I would have to formally list that on my form as far as people wanting to buy?
Well, you know, Athens is different. Because we have so many rental units, you know, it is a given that at least some of the rental around you, they're probably going to be rentals. And I would, you know, it's due diligence for people who are buying a house to look at the other houses around them. I think that, given some of the level of upkeep that some rentals are, I think that you'll find that people probably will have less issue if it's a short-term rental than if it's just some rental that's, that's next to you. You know, there's going to be a lot more eyes on that house because you're living across the street from it, you know, from your house that you're living across the street.
Right, but why should I be the police for your house?
No, if you are, if it's a tourist house, you have the owner living, you know, probably your neighbor.
Right. But you don't have that with the tourist necessarily.
Yes, but at the same time, you do have the people who own that tourist home there that will be able to address those issues. A tourist home, or a rental, or a home business, also, all have to be, they have to, you know, follow the noise ordinance, follow, you know, they can't, just because it's a tourist home, they, you know, there's issues where tourist homes have been turned into big party houses.
Right, or bathhouses or things like that, right?
Right. And so having the requirement of either living in a homestay, living in your house, or the tourist home where you are a neighbor of your own short-term rental, that's going to help address those issues. So not many places have a radius requirement in their regulation of short-term rentals. This is something that we put in because of the issue that others' communities have had about having houses that get out of control.
Right, but what I was getting, I guess what I'm trying to tie together is it does allow, this tourist thing does allow me, though, to buy up segments of the neighborhood if I wanted to.
Well, you can do that now with a rental, and you wouldn't have to live near them.
You still don't know what's going on in the house 250 feet away from you necessarily.
I, I'm not...
Well, meaning that you don't know what's going on in that house, even though you might live a couple doors down.
You would definitely know if they had a band there or a reception, or they were parked wrong, or they were having lots of people come. All those things you would know because you would be living there.
Anybody else on? Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
I just have a general question, and that is, how did you land on the 250-foot radius? Where'd that come from?
It was, you know, Paul and I were talking about it, looking at it. It keeps, it's like an eyes-on, you know? If it was 1,000 feet, that's not really living next to it. If it was right next door, nobody, you know, that's basically a regulation that just doesn't make any sense because there's no place in Athens that would probably have that, or one or two places. So, you know, it's, it's a eyes-on-the-property sort of thing.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because what becomes the pin for that radius?
Oh.
So does it, so is that radius from my property line, you know? Whatever my parcel looks like, does the pin start at the edge of the boundary of my property? Or does it become whatever the center of my property is?
When we looked at it, it was kind of a pin in the middle of property.
Pin in the middle of the property.
I have a question. Who did the modeling on this? Do we have an example of this in action, of this operation, homestay, whatever? It sounds like a slogan to me.
Well, we just kind of ran some with one of Paul's interns. They just did some roll basic mapping, so.
You mean, in other words, they looked at the plat map and looked at the distances?
They did, yeah. They looked at distances, they looked at how many properties were next door, you know, those sort of, if you had requirements of different sizes, so.
So in other words, I think you guys, or whoever did the modeling, is talking about making the neighbors kind of the enforcement effort, right?
No, it's making you the homeowner.
No, 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 no. I'm saying anyone who lives in a neighborhood who's not happy with what's going on has to, I mean, it's a different kind of thing from, you go and rattle your neighbor's cage, maybe. But once again, I'm back to, what, give me an example of a place where this works. I mean, I know that there are a bunch of people here who are operating illegally, I've heard. I haven't really checked. I mean, that's, what's to say they won't operate illegally in this case? And, you know, buy more up and all the rest? What's, who's going to enforce it ultimately? Who's the license holder?
The homeowner. The homeowner-operator?
Yeah, and who, police is the homeowner-operator?
It would be the code enforcement office.
Okay. It would be really nice if we knew what exactly you're going to ask in this. I personally would like to have you present for the neighbors and for the rest of us, you know, instead of go to council and, you know, maybe there's not enough room, maybe I don't know when it's going to be on. I mean, could we have a presentation of what you, you know, your mysterious licensure thing?
Right, yeah. And I'm going to be bringing it to council at the next committee meeting.
Could you bring it to us then at a meeting, like a...
Sure.
For sure?
Yeah, I mean, I'm more than happy.
I mean, we can have a hearing on it then at that point. I mean, we could have a public hearing, public meeting, right? I don't know, maybe I'm the only one who wants it. I mean, I guess I have a hard time with the people who are breaking the law, getting what they want, without really any regard to the rest of it. Because the neighbors aren't necessarily happy with it. I'm not happy with the party held still on the street, a few other things.
Right.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Stone?
How are we enforcing now in situations like this? I know it's, whack-a-mole was one of the things, but what's...
It's typically complaint-driven, so we'll receive a call, which I can see.
Do you know if we prosecuted, if the Lotteries Office has prosecuted anybody for... And that's not a trick question, I mean, we discussed this beforehand.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
What about 60-day warrants?
Paula did.
Yeah, we may have prosecuted before when Paul was in my job. So just, I understand you guys, it would have, again, passed on to the Lotteries Office and they get, make a decision whether or not they're going to prosecute.
Maybe she didn't prosecute him.
I'll dig into that also.
We know a couple of them. I don't know if they've been prosecuted or not.
They're still operating?
No, not that I know of. We've had, well, what I'm looking at is my predecessors' record. I'm still trying to learn my, my job here. But there were some that were, that were operating, and this was in 2016 and 2017, and the code office actually addressed those.
And it's a citation under the zoning code? Is that, is that the, and then, and then there's a fine, it's a minor misdemeanor, and then there's a fine?
It's a court date.
It's a court date, okay. And then they decide.
I don't think it's a court date.
Yeah, I will have to check on that.
Anybody else from the commission before I throw it over?
I do. And it's just, because I don't want this to get lost in the, in the mix, and it was Ms. Zemter's point about, you know, having a little more clarity in the definitions. You know, I think that that would be appropriate since this is changing, potentially changing the zoning code, to make sure that, things like the 250-foot radius or...
Right. I would suggest that you put in what you would like, and then when you send the recommendation, if you send the recommendation back to council, then it would be put in. So that's what I would do, instead of going through a new resolution process.
Thanks very much. We had a letter come in, a communication come in from Ms. Betty Hollow, and we received that material. Thank you very much. Would you care to come up and talk about that, please? And then...
My name is Betty Hollow, and I live at 31 Maplewood, which is in the only remaining close-to-town R1 district that has not already become primarily student housing or rental housing. My neighborhood has a balance of rentals and owner-occupied houses, which I appreciate and which brings some diversity to the neighborhood, but it's still primarily an owner-occupied neighborhood. That may not last if this idea goes through. But let me say to begin with, I'm glad you got the material that I sent you, and I hope it takes you seriously. And I do appreciate the questions that you have already asked because they voiced some of the concerns that I have already addressed to you in the mailing that I gave you. So my question to begin with is, why is Athens charging ahead to allow short-term rentals in R1 districts when cities across the country are in fact struggling to control these, to limit these, to get rid of them? And the second question is, is it feasible... And I would suggest that since a university is losing 1,800 students just this fall, in addition to some 300 last year, and more than 300 the year before, that there is less demand for rental housing in Athens, and perhaps some of the houses that are going to be empty could be taken over by those landlords and turned into a different kind of housing or a different kind of label, still rental housing, but some of it might be short-term. And that's necessarily eliminating some of the need to have this happen in R1 districts. And the next question I really think you're being concerned about is who benefits from this? Sometimes people think that cities benefit by being able to collect monies of different kinds, and I have a rather long article, I sent you three pages of it, it's actually 27 pages. It's by the Economic Policy Institute, which is a mutual agency with no prejudice on either side toward short-term rentals of their owners or everything else. They suggest that that is not true, that cities don't in the long run profit very much from it. Landlords perhaps might, but again, they are going to have some empty rentals already, so do we need more? And I would suggest that it's the residents in the R1 neighborhoods and in some R3 neighborhoods, or the people who will primarily, not all perhaps, but primarily will be the people who suffer from having their neighborhood changed from a primarily residential area to one that promotes businesses and commercialization of their properties. And I guess the question there is, are visitors more important than permanent residents? In my mind, it's nice to have visitors in Athens, I'm glad people enjoy Athens, but I think if you don't pay attention to your long-term residence, you are undermining the city's premise for living there. So what are the known consequences? Again, I would refer you to this article, and there are hundreds more like it. It's not hard to find. You haven't really addressed the parking. I looked only at the ordinances that were put online when city council decided to promote these, and I made a little chart, which is in your materials, and it suggests that for home stay, it does, it cites the number of rooms. The zoning code never refers to rooms in a house or a rental, they refer to the number of people. So if you say you can rent two rooms, that could vary from two people, four people, six people, depending on the makeup of the group you're renting to. The number of people is not stated. Again, in the ordinance, it did not indicate that there would be a permit and a license, and I'm glad to hear that there will be. What has not been addressed today or in the ordinance is parking. So should we assume that the parking requirements will remain as they are in the code, which would be two for any house, any owner-occupied house? And if that owner decided to rent, they would be allowed to rent to two people. Each of those extra people would require an extra parking place. So you're talking about four parking spaces for each rental of that sort. If a homeowner, or a person who simply rents property, rents in an R1 district, they are allowed to have three unrelated people. This chart indicates that in a tourist home, the number of rooms is not stated, but the number of people is. You're allowed to have a maximum of, how many? Six people. That doubles the number of people who would be allowed under normal circumstances to rent in an R1 district. And if you had six people, depending on how they arrive, no, not even depending on how they arrive, you would need a parking space for each person. Six parking spaces? Okay. And now, I hasten to say that I'm happy that some, what, radius had been suggested because that would prevent most of the rentals of this sort in my neighborhood, because the lots are 50 by 100. So that would eliminate anything in my neighborhood, so presumably I could give up this fight. Okay, anything else I want to say to you?
Because we are going to have to move along, we have about eight or nine minutes here.
Yes, I would encourage you to read this, maybe not all 27 pages, but if you just read the three, you'll see the benefits and the costs that this agency has determined are true for not just Athens, for short-term rentals. Thank you.
Who wants to speak right now? We only have like, really, a couple minutes. Let's see.
The parking, the parking on the table that's been put out, this is all draft, right? And the parking in the ordinance has now been?
Okay. We've got?
This is the other part of the business regulation.
Mr. Stauffer, three minutes, three minutes, and then we need a couple minutes just to wrap up the meeting here.
Okay, I need a lot more than three minutes. And Ms. Hollow, I'm not going to take more than three minutes. I need a lot more than three minutes. I think we need plenty of public input, and I don't think we need to be limited to three minutes to have something this devastating to an R1 neighborhood. She's completely right about this tourist home thing. Right now, you can have three unrelated people in an R1 district. So now you're going to have six unrelated people. Those six unrelated people, and you always have to consider worst-case scenario because someday, that's what you're going to have. So, in this tourist home thing, I think that should be stricken from the whole outfit because I don't know how that could ever be a positive thing other than for the guy who's raking in the money. That, it's just so frustrating. I got a couple of quick things I'm going to run by you. Leave R1 alone. Let's say we have a market. Let's say the market is out there. Let's say we need tourist homes, or we need bed and breakfast, or we need whatever the other terms are, frustrated. Allow it. Allow these things. Allow them in all your B districts. Allow them in your R3 districts. Allow them in your R2 districts. Do not allow them in your R1 districts. The market surely can be met, the market that is theoretically out there, for these folks, these visitors, these tourists, our guests, surely there's, there'll be enough people in the B zones, the R3 zones, and R2 zones to make the accommodations available to meet the market and leave the R1 district alone. The R1 district is where the folks live. I got $475,000 in my house on a, on a, a nice street on the Near East Side. We all know, whether we want to admit it or not, we all know, the Near East Side is going to be the neighborhood that is affected the most because it's closest, it's flat, and it has the nicest houses. Now, that's just a fact. So if you want to go in denial about that, that's not logical. I don't need a college education. I run on common sense, and common sense tells me that's the case. Now let's say you won't do that. And this is not, I don't even want to say this, but I'm going to say it in my own defense, and it still throws other people under the bus. Everything I just said, and allow the damn things on the main thoroughfares where they pass through an R1 district and don't let it infiltrate into the neighborhoods where the kids and the pets are. And your worst-case scenario with this tourist home or any of these things is Athens is not a typical tourist town. When people come to Athens, Ohio for the weekend, when people come to Athens, Ohio for the weekend, 50, 60, 70, 80 percent of them are coming down here to drink and raise hell. Now, I like to drink and raise hell as much as anybody else, but I do it in my backyard, and I keep my music down when I'm in the process of doing that. It doesn't need to be in R1. It doesn't need to be infiltrating our neighborhoods. The market can't be that big. And if you don't agree with that, and you say, well, no, we got to have it in R1, we got to have it, it's going to impact the East Side. We're doing that for a few people to make money at the cost of 95, 96, 97, 98 percent of the current permanent residents, and I want a lot more time to go over a lot more points.
There'll be more occasions to speak.
I don't want to be limited to three minutes. I want to have a meeting where me and our other neighbors and the people I'm going to round up can get a voice on this, because this is bullshit in the R1 district. I'm not opposed to any zone except R1.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Did you want to come up really quickly? Got three minutes.
Well, the first thing I want to say is I really appreciate the board members speaking to many of the issues that I wrote down on my notes, and, and that was a good thing. And if I have enough time, I would like to say a few things to the new code administrator and to Paul Oake. So, many concerns in this, right? The way it's written, I've written code before, okay? Not extensively assessed, this was, this was a big project, although there wasn't a lot incorporated into the old code. My understanding is that in the tourist home, it could be run by an operator. The operator has to be within 250 feet, not the owner. It says operator. Well, you read it, you go through the definitions, I read everything from the beginning to the end. I have a lot of confusion with that. My second point is, I didn't understand, and maybe you did if you've read this part, the home stay operated by a nonprofit corporation. I'm talking 64 people? I mean, I didn't even get how that came into the configuration of all of this and what that means, and that really needs to be looked at. Obviously, it was cleared up that the home stay had to be owner-operated because that was, that was not clear. And then the other thing was, was a single dwelling on a home stay or duplex, does that mean two and two? You can have two rooms in a, either side of the duplex, and that was not clear. And, and so, I'm going to go to enforcement, I wanted to piggyback on some of this enforcement stuff. And, and I know I'm saying this without Rick Saros being here, he was a former co-director, he and I had many, many conversations. Last time I talked to him, maybe several months before he left, about some issues. This is a phone conversation, so I don't have a document, and Rick is more than welcome to come someday and contradict me, but after we were done with my issues in my neighborhood, I said, well, there's this problem with this person that's renting out rooms on a B and B situation. And he said, Joanie, there's one incident going on in this town that I'm not allowed to enforce, and if I can't enforce that, I'm not enforcing any of them. So my question is, who's going to enforce 51% of the time of the owner-operator or the homeowner or in their house? Code can't do that. Code can't, code doesn't have time to, to micromanage whether this person is in town 51% or 80% or 20%. I mean, these kinds of little picky uni-things thrown into code are not enforceable. When you start putting things into code that are not enforceable, you water it down. It becomes useless. And so, I'm going to stop there because I think we're going to meet again. I would like to say one thing to Paul Oake, in terms of generational things, I have a philosophy, and that philosophy is when it comes to change, think about the fact that maybe where you are isn't as good as where you're going. And I have grandchildren that keep me as young as they are, and their, the youngest is three, so. So generationally, I'm not opposed to change, and I want to welcome the new co-director. I drive through Mason at least once a month on my way to Westchester, and I hope you bring that kind of condition to Athens because it's very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's going to, see, we're going to continue this discussion?
I believe we should. I think we should have this come forward next week, by the way, the next planning commission meeting will be next week because this one was off-cycle of what is normal. So it'll be next, I'm speaking for you, Mr. Chair. It will be in its normal time next week, and I think we just bring it forward as a case. I would encourage more conversation about this because at that point, we can make the difference.
Communication this week, and then it'll be a case next week, and we'll do the same thing probably that we discussed on the other one, which is we'd have to vote to bring it. Well, no, in this case, we don't because council.
You're in receipt of it, so.
Yeah, we're in receipt of it, so we don't have to do that.
The clock would have started today.
Okay, so it's, we'll have to decide about whether or not we're going to do a public hearing, which it sounds as though that's in the works.
I believe it should be because of the level of conversation that took place here today, and unfortunately, because of the timing, you know, I apologize that we couldn't. I can't control the courts, so they do have a case in here at 2 o'clock.
Very briefly, Mr. Oake, I didn't want to cut you off here as far as reports. Do you want to just table your report to the next meeting?
That would be fine. Thank you, yes.
Okay. So with our business concluded today, let's see, I'm sorry, the next meeting will be October 3rd here in the chambers at noon, and?
And everybody should have a copy of business regulations that are proposed by council by that time, please?
They're in your packet.
Not in mine.
I gave them mine. Oh, they should be.
So if the business of the Athens City Planning Commission completed today, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.